I think they're, they're in the work session though, aren't they?
Yeah.
Both of them are. So, the first one is in regards to the Resolution 2746, I think, but everyone's still filling in, so.
Yeah, Matt, come on up.
This one's good.
It's already been queued up for you.
No, councilor concerns, right?
No.
No. We didn't receive any, okay.
Okay. There we go. I'm Matt Palmer, Civil Engineering Department, councilors. I'm here to present a resolution for a jurisdictional transfer of a portion of Ritter Road. Back in late 2018, there was a meeting between the city and the county discussing Ritter Road, and it came up that the county actually owned this cyan portion of Ritter Road. Zoom in here. At that meeting, it was determined that it should be transferred to the city's jurisdiction. After discussing with the county a few months back, it turned out that they had already went through their process to transfer to us through their Board of Commissioners. So, this is more of just a formality, this resolution, to formally, basically, take over jurisdiction of, of this portion of the right-of-way. If anybody has any questions, I can, I can answer.
There's no monetary change at all?
No, no monetary change.
They're just gonna give it to us?
Correct, yeah.
And it's ours?
And I believe we currently maintain it as-is, because we previously thought it was ours.
It's sort of like a housekeeping thing?
Exactly.
I, I think, go back here, we need to maybe... Is this Clackamas County or Washington County? We're talking about the county and not being very...
Sorry, yes, this is Clackamas County. The, the county line is actually right there. So, the, the yellow is Washington County, Ritter Road, and the cyan is Clackamas County.
Ritter Road. Oh, okay, okay, so, so the Washington County side is taken care of, is already in the city?
Yeah, and that was done in the early 90s.
Okay.
Yeah.
And this is a remnant of a Clackamas County thing?
Correct.
Do we have any other questions?
No, pretty straightforward. We've been taking care of it for decades, probably.
I think so.
In the 90s, yeah.
A while.
Time, okay, time to own it.
Yeah.
I think that's good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And the next up is Business Retention and Expansion Program?
All right, good evening, council. My name is Jordan Vance, Economic Development Manager, and I'm up here tonight with our consultant, Mary Bosch of Market Tech, and we're here to talk with you about our Business Retention and Expansion effort. So, Business Retention and Expansion is a critical component to Wilsonville's economic development strategy for a couple of reasons. First, it's part of our 2012 Economic Development Strategy to encourage ongoing growth of existing Wilsonville businesses. Studies have repeatedly shown that big recruitments and out-of-state relocations are down, and that 80% of growth comes from the expansion of existing local firms that tend to create more jobs and pay higher wages. Additionally, given that land constraints in Wilsonville, there's very low industrial vacancy, and there's limited vacant land to support new business recruitments until the Coffee Creek Industrial Area is ready for development. Business retention expansion is especially important leading up to enduring an economic downturn. And lastly, the information gathered from Business Retention and Expansion outreach can help inform coordination among city departments and improve the permitting and development process, and ultimately lead to a better customer experience. So, this work has been happening informally, but through this effort, we seek to put in more structure and processes in place that allows to make a meaningful impact and capture some of the findings to share back with council and the community. So, with that, I'm going to pass it over to Mary to talk with you a little bit more about our strategy. Mary Bosch is Principal of Market Tech and brings 30 years of experience on economic development experience, 30 years of economic development experience. She's helped over 25 communities in Oregon with their Business Retention and Expansion strategy, and recently led Clackamas County in creating their BRE strategy and implementation guide. So, that'll pass it over to Mary.
Well, thanks, Jordan, and thank you, council, for having our presentation. I want to congratulate you on initiating this critical component of your economic development strategy. When you think about how economic development organizations are organized to grow the economy, it is through business attraction and recruitment. It is also through helping entrepreneurs start up, and lastly, and most importantly, through working with the business base that you already have, which is, to me, an easy sell here in Wilsonville with this incredibly strong employment base of about 21,000. And we just saw, I just saw this week, the payroll impact of 1.1 billion, and it's like, okay, you are ready for this program, and it's really terrific. So, the goals of this project are really to reinforce the, with the existing business base, that Wilsonville is the location for them, to grow their business, expand and continue to succeed, that the city is ready to serve, that you are highly responsive, business-friendly, and eager to help them with their needs. As Jordan said, to create a systemized approach to business outreach. So, this is an effort that will carry on. It won't end when every business has been touched once. It will be part of an ongoing system of staying connected to, to these critical anchors in your community. And lastly, to support and encourage continued growth in Wilsonville's business space. So, the program will focus principally on traded sector businesses, those companies that are importing income from out-of-state into the community, conversely, exporting their goods and services. So, in contrast to commercial and service businesses, who are largely circulating dollars within the community, traded sector companies are actually expanding the economy. And the second key target are gazelle companies that are growing faster and have higher growth potential in Wilsonville. They're usually smaller companies, sort of in a startup, fast-growth stage. Now, this doesn't mean that the program won't work to touch all businesses in the community, and we'll talk about that in, in a minute. But part of the work with, with Clackamas County was taking a look at who's doing business retain, who are the models nationally and within Oregon. So, out of that, we identified a few best practices to help model this program. One is, of course, you've got to have dedicated staff. You're fortunate to have one super dedicated staff person in Jordan, and, as well as a team of other members of city staff that are working in collaboration. Business outreach, to do it well, has to be really focused, targeted, and results-oriented, so that from the get-go, we'll be working to measure the outcomes and the results. The most effective programs have strong personal touch, personal connection, and are about building relationships. So, all of this will help reinforce a pro-business culture, which is critically important to a successful program, because, in essence, Jordan will be advocating for the business community, and it, his effectiveness in troubleshooting and helping businesses with opportunities as well is only as good as having the team spirit behind him. And, of course, tracking and measuring will have a much better feel a few months from now, after some time in the field. But hopefully, a year from now, Jordan will be making a report to you of the outcomes achieved so far. And, of course, best practices are also tied to being sure to tell your stories and promote the results that you achieve, so that you're building the credibility of the, of the city, as well as the, the chance for other businesses to feel comfortable and positive about connecting to city staff to receive help. So, here we are in the pilot phase of this program. We, we've been waiting to meet with you to move past the organizing stage and sort of building the system into initiating business visits, and, as well as a community-wide business survey, which will give all businesses a chance to, to connect with the city regarding their issues and what their interests are in terms of help and assistance from economic development. The fun part comes when you start hearing back from the businesses, and, of course, getting in front of them through one-on-one calls, because that's when, you know, up until, up until then, we're sort of in a anticipation mode, but that's the true discovery. What are the needs? What are the collective needs? Are there common themes that can be addressed, maybe through some, you know, programmatic strategies that can be implemented for, across a business cluster or a particular sector in Wilsonville's economy? And then continuous adaptation and adjusting the program, continuing relationship building, and, of course, telling back the results and the stories. So, as I noted, all businesses will have a chance to participate, although face-to-face interviews, well, the stretch goal here is about one face-to-face interview a week, which, you know, fingers crossed, we'll get to at least 30 to 40. This is a little bit ambitious, I think, for starting out. The online survey gives everyone a chance right away to participate and share their input, and there's going to be a pretty intensive campaign promoting this survey over the next month or so. We're hoping to, to really do some good outreach before school gets out and businesses, business managers start to get busy even busier than, than during the year. And, of course, we'll be promoting Jordan as the city's ombudsman for, for business advocacy throughout this process, so that the relationship is with him as he's on the front line out in the community. No program exists without being well-versed in the general type of assistance that companies are looking for, which, community and economic development are already, you know, well-prepared to, to address these key, key benefits that Wilsonville can offer, as well as access to, to assistance and resources and incentives. And partner collaboration is a critical component of any successful program. So, while there are some very strong relationships, both with external partners who are serving businesses throughout the county and metro area, as in the case of Greater Portland, Inc., there's also the chance to strengthen those relationships and, of course, build, continue to build the good work that's going on internally among all the departments at the city, getting behind sort of this business response team, theme for, for business outreach and assistance. And here are some of the potential metrics that we're hoping to begin to, to add some meat to. Typical return on investment metrics are around jobs created and private investment, but, of course, looking at vacancy rates, space leased, as well as simply the, the number of visits and the number of businesses assisted, you know, will be important measures. Ideally, with every business outreach, at least certainly the one-on-one outreach, there'll be some follow-up feedback on how did this experience go? That could be an online survey, or possibly some, you know, a very short interview, so that we keep the customer service component of this fresh, and, as I say, continue to adapt the process, and what does it mean to provide good service to businesses? And what do we, what is, what is Wilsonville learning from the process, so that it can become the model for the next generation of economic development programs that are working to incorporate BRE in their services? So, bottom line is that there will be a lot of emphasis on tracking results and evaluating. We would love to hear your comments and questions before we get ready to embark on launching this program.
Thanks so much, Mary. And in your package, there's also two attachments. There's a sample survey of the types of questions we would be asking businesses. There'd be a questionnaire for in-person meetings, and then a smaller, shorter version online. And then there's a sample report.
Oh, thank you. And there's a sample report of what we could hopefully present to council at the end of this effort with findings and intel from our, our effort. One last example, here's a, a sample handout that we've put together, that we would hand out to businesses during these conversations. This concludes our presentation. If you have any questions?
Go ahead.
You go ahead.
Okay. So, you've done this all, all over the state, as Jordan said. So, what's the response rate on a survey like this? The initial response? I mean, how much do they have to do, reach out to catch the other 50%, 70%?
It's highly variable on the size of the business community, how many touches there have, they've already got from, from the city or through other mechanisms, and who receives, who hears the message, you know, that there's a survey opportunity to give the city input?
Who's your contact person?
Exactly.
Is it the right person?
So, it's going to be, you know, we're just about to kind of lay that phase out. In some communities, it can be as high as 30% of the business database. You know, typically, it works to have a timeframe, a pretty short timeframe, like three weeks, right? So, and just to sort of reinforce the PR and the message repeatedly through multiple mechanisms during that time.
So, you just don't send the survey again? You, you reach, you're going to have to reach out to those who don't respond to get at least that piece completed?
Yeah, I think you have, we have to get creative. There'll be phone calls, working with partners, working with the Chamber and other folks in Wilsonville who may have contacts. One idea we had to initiate this effort was maybe to work with Mayor Knapp, but to send out a letter from the mayor saying we're going to embark on this effort. There'll be staff reaching out. We'd love to hear your input.
Yeah, that it's coming from the top, yeah. How many businesses are here?
It's on the handout. There's 1,000. We just got that updated numbers from 2017.
Okay, oh, 1,135? Okay.
And how many of those are traded sector?
Working on that. A couple hundred, I think we...
I think, yeah, at least 20, 30% are traded sector. The numbers we have are about 50% of the incomes are in traded sector industries here.
Right.
I have one more. Okay, that's it.
So, how, how would you describe, or how would you know that we are pro-business?
Would somebody know that?
How, how do you make sure?
How do you measure that? Yeah.
Say we're pro-business or we're not pro-business?
Well, I can give you a very specific example. When it comes to BRE, response rate is critical. So, in other words, you get an inquiry from a business, you have a, you have a personal interview, and you immediately begin to respond to whatever questions, challenges, issues might come up. Some BRE programs promise a 24-hour response. That doesn't mean they're going to resolve every issue, but they're going to gather, begin gathering information, depending on what the need of the business is. So, that's one example. Quite frankly, that, that internal team, the cohesiveness, the, the creativity, the flexibility to address business needs is a critical measure.
Okay, so, you, you, how much do I want to say here?
What a loaded question.
We have been accused of being not pro-business by the Chamber for many years, many years. And, and the big one that I, that I brought up before was when we did not turn, we turned down Cabela's and held on to the property, which is now Cisco, which Cisco bought to expand. And I, I don't think there's a better example of business retention and expansion than that we stuck to the zoning as regionally significant industrial area and held on to it against huge pressure from the Chamber. I wasn't here, but
Yeah, that was a...
Others were. And accusations that we were anti-business because we didn't roll over for Cabela's, a big retailer. But retail is always easier to get than industrial, and certainly easier than business retention and expansion if you want space for your existing businesses to expand.
Would you say that's an isolated instance or a pattern?
I would say that's a pattern. Now, the other one that comes up is our position with regards to the Aurora Airport. And we're accused of being anti-business because we have been opposed to expansion of the airport. So, I mean, I, I know how pro-business gets thrown around as, you know, both an attack on electeds and, and a compliment on electeds, and I don't really know what that means, pro-business, other than, of course, we're always nice and want traded sector and et cetera. But when we're locked in a battle with the Chamber on some very important issues, like holding on to industrial land and not letting it go for retail, or, or quality of life issues, you know, it puts us in a, in a position of being afraid to make a move, because we'll be accused of not being pro-business.
One of the impacts of this work will be concrete information from the business community. The approach that we're creating is to try to build confidence, to try to encourage open, honest responses, and we can certainly weave those questions?
Certainly, the other one, the other really good example here is Coca-Cola, who consolidated all their Southwest Washington operations into Wilsonville, did major expansion. I'm sure there are other stories like that, certainly Mentor, and Mentor and all its offshoots over the years. But, anyway, I, it's something I get frustrated with, and also on the development side. Is there any city doing more development faster than Wilsonville? And yet, we get complaints from...
We get complaints about fees and things that are, those are critical to businesses.
The home builders who don't see us as friendly, even though we're building more than anyone.
So, this, this survey seems to me, doesn't get into the subjective, it's more objective. There is one question, question 13, in your opinion, what could be done to improve local business conditions, where somebody could put something in there? I guess that's more of an open-ended question, right? But I would think that the business-friendly, not-business-friendly would be more focused on, when you went through the permitting process, was that fairly speedy? Did you feel good about the process? You know, whether, you know, were the outcomes good for you? And maybe, have you had any positive interactions with city staff on a regular basis? When you had a problem and called City Hall, how did you feel about those interactions? Did you feel like you had advocate? I would assume that that's more what you're talking about, and less perceptions on whether or not we want a typical business in our community or not.
That's where those perceptions come from. They come from their personal experiences. So, we'll be accumulating stories, we'll be accumulating sort of the trend, trended response.
So, to, to Council Lehan's point, if we get some of that in there, then that's a, kind of a message to us that we need to provide information on why we held on to that property, the Elixon property, because that turned out to be a huge, it took some courage for the council at that time to say, no, this is not what we want in our community.
I wasn't there, but the rest of you are...
Yeah, I was running for, I was running when that was an issue. It was a political issue, and it'd be very different.
Tarred and feathered for hanging on to that land, and it was extremely unfair.
And if there's a way to show the economic benefit
We could definitely do that.
So that, I mean, I, I think part of what we'll do in this program is we'll anticipate sort of some of the objections that might come up in a conversation, and it would be really nice to have at the ready sort of a couple of case studies from the past of what, not in defense, but simply in terms of quantifying the positive impact to the city with the higher wage, higher-quality job base that you have in spades over.
Well, but I think it also goes to our, our comprehensive plan, where we're not trying to be regional retail people. Our comp plan says we provide, you know, retail for our local folks, and there's, you know, pros and cons to that, but we're not looking to attract certain businesses. And I think that's been the case since long before I got here, or even maybe even Council Lehan.
Well, and, and the other thing I think that, that speaks to excellent planning is how we handle the trucking industry and truck movement in the city of Wilsonville, which most citizens are not very aware of, the way you can't help but be aware of it in, in, like, To Walloton, where massive trucks are running through the commercial district all the time. And, and here we, you know, back way before me, the, the decision to do industrial in our northwest quadrant, that we're continuing on with Coffee Creek and Basalt Creek, Coffee Lake?
Coffee Creek.
Coffee Lake Drive?
Well, Coffee Creek is the...
Coffee Creek is the area, and Basalt Creek, anyway. And the way we designed 95th Avenue to accommodate big trucks, and, you know, I mean, we've been through this industrial lands thing multiple times for why we can, why we feel like we can accommodate a lot of industrial land and a lot of industrial traffic, and better than most cities. But we have also stood our ground on not putting industrial land over in Frog Pond, for instance, which is what the region was looking to do at one point, because we hadn't planned it for that. It doesn't, the roads are not built for trucks over there. We've got schools, we've got libraries, we've got a commercial district. We don't want them there. But we built the west side to be extremely truck-friendly. So, it, it is a lot how we have planned the city and how city planning works, or, and has worked from, you know, the 1970s, and that commitment to good planning, which we're still doing.
And to me, that's a great story for Jordan to tell as part of our economic development story, so we could do, inform people, educate people as to why we are the way we are.
It doesn't happen by happenstance. It's not luck.
It isn't just because
People say, we're so lucky, we have such a great city, we're so lucky. It's incredible amount of work.
It isn't just because you're friendly and smile at businesses, you're thinking what their needs are.
And what's best for your entire community.
And for the whole community, because then, because then we are not constantly doing battle with people who hate trucks in their neighborhood, because we got trucks taken care of on the, on the other side of town. taken care of on the, on the other side of town.
But still, we have to deal with people in terms of what their perceptions are.
Right.
That's what I hear you saying.
Sure.
And there was always the exception. I mean, you do see Coca-Cola and Martin on Wilsonville Road, because that happened a long, long, long time ago. But then, it was a, a good lesson learned. So then it's like, we can't deal with this.
Three trucking deals on, on, who used 283.
Yeah, and that's challenging. But it's only three. And yet, we have all that industrial on the northern end that to accommodate, it would have been terrible.
I had a question as well, unless you wanted to, kind of shifting topics, on the Estacada example that you included in the packet, I saw that they, it looked like they had use of volunteers in some sort of groups that did some of these interviews, perhaps. And I wondered if you had more information on that, and if you were thinking about applying. I know, you know, using volunteers, there's always, you know, strengths and challenges in working with a team of volunteers, but I wondered if you had thoughts on that, especially in looking at how many, realistically, how many touches we, we think that we can do, in-person touches over a course of each year compared to the number of businesses that we have in Wilsonville, right? So I wondered if you could just give a little, you know, share your thoughts on some of that.
And to answer your earlier question, Council Lehan, the, the target list we have at this point is about 100 some businesses. So about 70 or so traded sector manufacturing on our priority list, and then 30 or so gazelles. And we get that list from Clackamas County. So they have, based on the public data that's available from Dunn and Brad Street, there are some indicators on growth in sales, growth, growth in employment, that would give them the high-growth gazelle status. So that's our, our list we're starting off with, is about 100 businesses. Mary and I have talked about this a lot, on how to, how to conduct these meetings, because there's a lot of partners that, that could be a part of them. There's, you saw the slide, there's a lot of internal and external partners. And we feel that, that it's more conducive to having a candid, open conversation if the group is sometimes a little bit smaller and it's more informal. So one thought on that strategy was to bring in partners as relevant and as applicable. So if we're aware of a transit issue, or a workforce training need that an employer might have, then that would be an opportunity to bring in Clackamas, maybe Clackamas Community College, or OIT, or bring in a partner like that for a follow-up meeting. My understanding with Estacada is I think they had a grant to help support some of this work, and they had some advisory committees with volunteers to help with outreach.
Yeah. It's not uncommon for smaller communities to use a volunteer group. I think it's equally challenging to manage that volunteer group.
Exactly. Get everyone pointed in the same direction when you're doing the critical outreach.
With the sophisticated business base that you have, and the breadth and depth of your traded sector, it wasn't advisable here. It's possible if, if, for example, the Chamber wanted to have, wanted to participate, to get one-on-one with key retailers, that, you know, we could help inform them to, on that approach, and they could augment this. Just as an example, there might be a chance for one segment of the, one or two segments of the business base to be addressed through a volunteer outreach.
Also, some of the contents of these conversations can be confidential, too, because businesses will share growth plans, sensitive information.
Yeah, that makes sense. I had another question about the sample survey that you had. And I, the, the sample that we had in here almost looked like it could be a paper survey, but I understand it's probably an online survey.
And I think the idea is that it's in a guided questionnaire for these meetings. And these meetings can take lots of twists.
I see, like, it's like something you would bring with you to your one-on-one.
Yes. And these meetings can take, can look very different, depending on what the business would like to speak about. So, they may be interested in, very interested in transit, or workforce training, or a legislative bill. So, the, the focus of the conversation can largely depend on what the employer is interested in talking about. But hopefully, we can insert some of these questions and capture feedback on city process. Did you have a good customer experience? What can we do to help?
Right. Okay, that makes sense. That, that kind of gives me a better idea of how this tool might be used to...
We divisioned a shorter survey going online, where we could capture some of that same information.
Okay. I wondered specifically in the Section 1 background, it's kind of almost like demographics or something for business, right? If the survey online, if it wouldn't be, make sense for it to be like a branching survey, so depending on how they responded to an earlier question, then they receive a certain set of follow-up questions. Because some of these questions kind of jumped out to me as, oh, this wouldn't be applicable for a very large company. You know, like that, is your business based in your home? Or something, you know, like that. That wouldn't work for some of them.
And that's why those businesses are going to face-to-face, different, different tweet.
Exactly. But I wondered if that might, if it's an online tool, because then people taking the survey might feel that they're being spoken to and acknowledged for who they are, in a better way, if it was some sort of a branching survey, so that questions could be tailored to, to them. Of course, in person, you'll pick the questions that are most relevant to, to who you're meeting with in that conversation and how it's going.
That's a great idea.
Yeah.
I was, I was going to also ask on the, on the questionnaire, there's a question about transportation, or it's a box you can choose, major issues or barriers, that just says transportation access and improvements. It seems like one thing that we might want to get a little more detail on is Interstate 5 versus, can you get to your business in Wilsonville?
Local streets versus...
Local streets versus Interstate 5. I mean, I would presume when, when you ask one of the top advantages of business location within Wilsonville is Interstate 5. I, I would presume that's going to come up for most of them. And probably the disadvantages of Interstate 5 also.
Same answer.
Because it's not functioning. But this would be good data for us to have as we try to raise the status of the Southwest corridor of Interstate 5, which is, of course, beyond our purview to fix. But, but to get more regional focus on it, to be able to say, our businesses are constrained, this is a constraint. And, and I would think, I mean, if it, as, as it continues to deteriorate, would be a reason they would not, they'd be hesitant to expand here. So, anyway, it, it just doesn't see, I don't see Interstate 5 anywhere here, just generally transportation. And we might want to dig on that one a little more.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, and I think we can include that. We've worked with planning to insert a couple other questions that aren't in this version on workforce housing. So questions about, does your workforce live in Wilsonville? Why or why not? What are the barriers? So if there's any other areas or other intel that you think would be good to gather through this process, we're happy to include it.
I would think I-5, you would want to call I-5 out separately from local streets.
It's the elephant, it's the elephant on the survey, right?
But if you just have it as one lump, then they're...
We wouldn't know.
They're talking about Wilsonville Road, yeah, or Beckman.
It's a good call.
Right. Yeah, I like the housing idea. That's a great idea, to put that in, because that's a big piece of what we're talking about, is to keep I-5, more cars off I-5 if people worked here, lived here and worked here.
Then we'll have a sense for planning to work on the equitable housing front, if they're interested businesses that might be able to do a focus group, or administer a survey with their, their workforce.
What would your employees need here in town? Yeah, excellent.
Any other questions?
That's good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I look forward to hearing about it.
Yeah.
On all these things.
Okay. Okay, next up is the telecommunications replacement project.
Good evening. Pull up our presentation real quick here.
This is an item that will be on our consent agenda, right?
Yes, yes. All right, good evening. I'm Andy Stone. I'm the IT Director for the city. And to my left is Richard Gross. He's the Network Admin and the Project Manager for this project.
Good evening. I've been with the city for almost two years now. Previously, I was a telecom administrator at Salem Hospital for about 10 years. I'm really excited to work on this project.
All right. So, why are we doing this? So, the current Cisco voice-over IP system was installed back in 2004, and formed the backbone of our network. In addition to phones, we installed networking equipment, fiber between a couple buildings, just to get things up and running. It has served us well, and has, and we've made sure to keep the, up with the maintenance of all the backend, or the, of the equipment behind the scenes. While the backend is stable, the physical phones that are sitting on people's desks are, begin to wear out. We're starting to see an increase in wear and tear of the physical phones. The stands are starting to come apart, and phones will occasionally develop static and even stop working altogether. To further complicate matters, the most recent release of the backend of the Cisco software has deprecated certain phone models. This means that some of the phones no longer will work with the newer software that they are pushing out. A few models of the phones that we use were affected by this, and more are scheduled to become obsolete over the next several years. In addition to these factors, the phone systems have continued to develop additional features that, that were not available back, to us back in 2004. Instead of paying money just to upgrade the handsets, we decided to put out an RFP to look at the options that were available to the city.
Just to clarify, this is Cisco with a C, not Cisco with an S.
Yes, yes.
In case anyone is taking notice.
Yeah, big difference.
Not Cisco with an S.
C I S.
So, the city issued an RFP in December and solicited the bids for the new phone system. We received five proposals that featured three different phone manufacturers from companies both local and as far away as Indiana. We put together a team of heavy phone users to review the proposals, and after some in-depth discussion, we asked three companies to come back onsite to present their proposals. After much consideration, we chose Structured Communications MyTel phone system. So, we figure, or we, we felt that Structured's proposal was an excellent mix of features, service, and price. The MyTel Connect system that we chose had all the traditional phone system features that you would expect. But what drew us into the, into their system was how much integration there can be. Once implemented, the phone system will integrate with a user's computer and give them much more control over phone call functionality. And you can kind of see an example of that on the right there. For example, an admin can see other users' status by integrating with Outlook before they transfer a call. A status could be in a meeting, or on vacation, or busy until 3:00, allowing them to give a better feedback to the person that's trying to get ahold of somebody. There will also be tight integration with city-issued cellphones. That will allow a number of different ways to get ahold of someone. An app can be loaded on a city-issued phone that will allow it to function essentially just like a desk phone. With the touch of a button, the app can allow a call that was started on a desk phone to transfer almost seamlessly to their cellphone, so they can walk out and go into the field if, if need be. And if we set it up, single reach can be enabled. This allows a person to call one number, and it will reach them either at their desk or their cellphone, depending on the preferences that are set. In some cases, the app, app could allow a user to do away with a desk phone completely, depending on their, what they do for the city. Another capability that we are excited about is the ease of use of the automated system attendance. We currently use a phone tree in several locations to help guide citizens to the services that they need. The system that we have now is very cumbersome, and it could take up to a couple hours to make simple changes. The ability, or that ability will be greatly simplified with the MyTel Connect system, and will allow the city to make quicker edits to call trees and, or if something arises. Along those same lines, the overall administration of the system will be much less time-consuming. This will free up IT staff for other important tasks. These and many of the other features will allow the city to be more responsive to, to citizens. Service was also a, a very important feature that we looked for in the RFP. Structured is a local company that has been around for more than 25 years, and the city has used them in previous projects, and have always been impressed with their service. They are a, a top-tier partner with MyTel, and have a lot of experience with, with MyTel. In their RFP response, they outlined a specific training plan just for the city of Wilsonville that's going to help everybody get up to speed in a, in a quick manner. And they also have a great support option, where we actually will work directly with Structured rather than MyTel, which we believe is going to result in a much more responsive support setup than, than in a traditional situation. And then price was another big factor in the selection of Structured. When we did our initial research, we estimated that the phone system could cost more than $200,000 to replace. We were pleasantly surprised that all of the bids came in lower than expected. After selecting Structured and learning how the system works, we fine-tuned the proposal and arrived at a cost of about $125,000. There are a couple other components not included in Structured's scope, but we do not expect the total cost of the project to exceed $130,000. Initially, we were shooting for a, to get the installation of the phone system by the end of the fiscal year. But after discussing the project with Structured, we decided to push that one back to October. So, why October? So, two reasons. The first reason was that we decided to perform a phone line audit in conjunction with the phone upgrade. We'll be working with Structured to analyze the phone lines that are used in the current phone system, and identify if they are the best choice for the new system. Oftentimes, we can identify lines that are not used to their capacity, or are simply not needed with the new, with the MyTel system. We'll be looking at the delivery of the systems of these phone lines as well, since there are new options that were not available in 2004 when we first set this up. Moving the project to October gives us the time to research our options and find the best fit for the city. Second reason is the phones themselves. In our interview process, we discovered that a new phone system was going to, or a new phone was going through the certification process for the MyTel system that was selected. It's been used for about a year in other MyTel systems, and has received good reviews. So to kind of give you an idea of what we're talking about, looking at some of the MyTel phones. So this is one of the original ones from the mid-'90s.
Old school.
Yeah, you can tell that it's an older one. The photo, it doesn't even have good resolution. It's kind of fuzzy. But they've moved on. This is one from about 2000. Apparently, these are still used in a lot of companies worldwide. They've been a workhorse for MyTel. This is the phone that was proposed for our, our system. And they were developed around 2012, give or take. There's actually several cities in the, in our local area that use a version of this phone. But we decided to wait for this phone. We thought it was a very contemporary design, and should kind of stand the test of time and give us a, a long range. We decided to standardize on the single, on a single phone design for the entire city. This is a 6930. It's kind of a mid-range phone in the 6900 series. It has some features that the base phones don't have, like Bluetooth, but it doesn't have the huge screen and hundred-lines capability of the higher-end models. We feel like this one should be a good fit for us. To give you kind of a little bit of a comparison, this is actually their top-of-the-line one. You can see it has a much bigger screen and tons of button capabilities, but it's quite a bit more expensive. And then as a point of reference, these are the Cisco phones with a C that we currently use right now. These are the areas that it usually breaks down. A lot of times, you'll come back and it's just laying on your desk, which is a little annoying. So, that kind of gives you an idea of what we've got planned. Are there any questions?
Does the handset have a wire, or wireless?
So, there are two options. With the Bluetooth capability, you can do it without a wire, and we expect that in a few locations where people, you know, the, the wire gets in the way. But by default, the model that we have will have a, a wire in the majority of the implementations.
So, I'm pleased that it's coming in so low compared to, I know your, your budget was $220.
Yeah.
So, that just... And so, that just, that was the expectation at that time, that it's going to be that high?
Well, when we got the original quotes, there were a couple things that were working against us. This system was able to reuse a lot of the infrastructure that we already have, the switching network that we have. Some of the other ones that we got quotes for would have required basically to pull all the old stuff out, put new stuff in. So luckily, we didn't have to do that. There was also some reporting features that would drive up the price of the phone systems. And actually, the Structured actually has a deal with a reporting company, and we were able to get a higher level of reporting than what is standard, essentially wrapped into the price of this one.
And, and the switching hardware, it's not too old? It'll, it'll work, even though it was put in at 2004, too?
Well, so we've been kind of maintaining the backend, so there is a lifecycle to those, and we...
So you've been updating that?
Yes.
Just not the, not the desktops?
Not the, yeah, the handsets are, yeah, about 15 years old, give or take.
Okay, okay, thanks.
I wondered, the phone line audit that you spoke about, I'm not sure that I understand really what that, what that is. Can you give me like a, for instance?
Sure, so the, back in 2004, we used what are referred to as PRIs to bring the phone lines in, and I don't remember what the acronym is off the top of my head, but it is a, it was a style that basically was a bundle of 25 lines that come in. Since then, there have been, and that was a kind of copper wire that was brought into a building. Since then, there have been new technologies that have come out. One is referred to as SIP, and it actually brings the phone lines in across like what is an internet one. And so, because of the way that several phone companies build out their infrastructure, and we're going to identify it in the audit, we believe that it probably would be cheaper to bring our phone lines in via SIP than PRI, and reducing the overall monthly cost of just phone lines. And then there's a bunch of other lines. In the old system, we were required to have some copper lines for 911 capability. If the phone system went down, you could still call 911. Again, advancements have been made that we don't necessarily have to have two, or four, or eight of those now per site, we may be able to just get away with two. So, we may be able to pare down what we pay at certain sites for that type of thing.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions?
All right, all right, thank you.
New phone for Kim. Since you use a phone a lot.
Okay, the last item, the community enhancement program recommendations.
Thank you, Council President Akervall. So this evening, I'm here to provide a quick update and overview on our community enhancement program and the recommendation from our community enhancement committee for the 2019 cycle.
I'm sorry, would you, does she need to introduce herself?
Oh, I apologize. I'm Zoe Monahan, I'm the Assistant to the City Manager, and I oversee this program for the city.
Thank you.
I apologize. So this program has been going on in the city since 2015. It is something that we work with Metro on, so we have an intergovernmental agreement with Metro that established this program. And we receive funds through Metro for projects, and we'll go through the criteria a little bit later, and we receive the funds since we have a waste processing facility within our community. So this is just a quick overview, it's a little small, these are also in your packet of the goals that are outlined within our IGA with Metro, and this is one of the criteria for the application, so they need to meet at least one of these goals, and then they also need to, the projects also need to be within this limit. And as you can see, there's a number of great opportunities to have positive impact, impacts, and create lots of benefit in the community. And as I mentioned, the funding is provided through Metro, we receive it on a quarterly basis. Generally, we receive about $80,000, or we anticipate to receive about $80,000 annually. However, this year we, or in the next cycle, we expect to receive about $70,000 in revenue. We've had a number of great projects come out of this program, we've had 15 that have been, have had funds allocated thus far. There's a picture of the Willamette Way West project that's improving sidewalks as well as adding a rapid flashing, rapid flashing beacon, which appears much more clear on my computer than it does in the one available here. There's also a project to increase lighting, which we'll talk about, for the Beauty and the Bridge project. There's a project to provide an interpretive panel, four of them actually, for the Beauty and the Bridge project, which is nearing completion. Hopefully, by the end of the fiscal year, however, it might be, it will be done by the end of the calendar year. The library also has a sign that they're working on that has been funded through this project. So this is our overall revenues over time, so with the, since 2015, we've received over $300,000 for this project. As the projects are allocated funds, we put them in one category, and then there's the additional funds that have not been allocated. So in this cycle, we had the unallocated funds, what we expected to receive through the rest of the fiscal year, since we've not received those yet. So we'll still continue to receive funds for the last two quarters. And then we also have the anticipated revenue for the next fiscal year cycle. So we, we have about 92, nearly $93,000 that's available before you look at the expected revenue for next year for projects that have been applied for in this cycle. So it's a pretty standard process that we go through. We receive applications from community groups or from staff project suggestions, and then they're reviewed by folks on our team that have some sort of expertise or knowledge in that area. The applicants will provide a presentation to our committee. The committee, I should note, is made up of Mayor Knapp, Councilor Stevens, four community members, as well as Metro Councilor Dirksen, and they review the projects with the applicants. They have an opportunity to ask questions of them to better understand the projects before their discussion. They'll send staff back to gather more information as needed before making their recommendation to you. These are the seven projects that were submitted this year. The first one is the Beauty and the Bridge Lighting Project, which is one that they're looking to continue funding for. This would provide lighting under the underpass at Wilsonville Road where the Beauty and the Bridge artwork is located. The Boons Ferry Primary Stormwater and Education Project would design and install stormwater facilities, and they would include the student participation. They'd also look to include ongoing education through future curriculum and an interpretive panel, so that the children could continue to learn from this in the future. The Historical Society, which was our one community application this year, submitted an application for an archive database system and to do some research. This is building on their application from 2018. The Graham Oaks, Willamette Way West Project is a continuation. There were two previous projects, Graham Oaks and then Willamette Way West, which internally we've combined to finalize that project. The Street Tree Infill Project is intended to meet a council goal, so this would allow for 100 trees to be planted, it would provide outreach to gather the folks that would actually have the street trees planted near their homes, to do the planting and then to help encourage ongoing maintenance. And then the Wilsonville Smart Flower Baskets would be installed at Smart Central. This year, they have their 30th year celebration as well as their electric bus celebration. They've had these in the past, and I guess they were very well received, so I'd like to bring that back. And then the Wilsonville Historical Trail Project is the one project that did not meet the application criteria, but they were looking to gather some, some information about historical sites around the community. So, the committee came up with the recommendation in front of you, so they selected five of the six projects that met the application criteria. They had a lot of interest in the Beauty and the Bridge Lighting Project. However, it became very clear through the review process with the committee and through conversations with the applicant, that there was a lot more work to be done before this project was really ready. Specifically, what type of lighting would ODOT approve, and what would this look like? And there is definitely an interest in making sure that the art is highlighted in addition to making it safer for pedestrians. So, the committee asked staff to go back and basically do a little bit more initial review to gather that information, to figure out what ODOT might approve, and then come back to the committee, hopefully in the fall or earlier, in order to provide that to them to then seek the funding. The one other item that I should note is that the Graham Oaks, Willamette Way West Project is nearing completion, so they recommended that this project be funded immediately. The rest of the projects, the four remaining projects, would then be recommended for funding at the beginning of the fiscal year, July 1 of 2019, which is our standard practice. One other thing to note is that the Historical Society submitted a revised request through this process. They had submitted a revised request that, they'd gone back and looked at their budget and decided to make sure it actually got them what they needed. So it still includes their data collect, their data management program, which is a software program, and training for the Historical Society, so they can still use the program in the future. But it updates the amount of what the archivist will cost, so they realized they needed a professional archivist, the cost that they would be per hour, as well as the number of hours needed, so they went back and did some more ground truthing and realized they needed additional funds. So with that, this summary includes our staff recommendation, which would actually increase the amount for the historical database archives, including that additional $4,000. So the, the recommendation from the committee was nearly $71,000, and with the increase for the Historical Society with their revised numbers, it would be $75,391.40. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, so, the Graham Oaks, Willamette Way pedestrian, that is so close to being finished, because I walked it at 5:30 this morning, and the lights flash, and cars stopped, and the sidewalks finished, which was really nice, because it was just darkness before, trees before that. So that's, there's just fine-tuning that now, and it's, my walking partners, this is great, you know, we've been sort of anticipating that coming, it's going to be, it's fantastic, it was something that we needed a long time. The other thing is, I don't remember, Zoe, so at the committee, we approved, did the revised request from the Historical Society come in after our meeting or before?
No, it came...
Application.
It was during, during the...
Revised application that we didn't catch.
But we didn't catch it, yeah.
Right.
That's what I thought, okay, yeah, that's right, you were there, too.
You had both applications in your packet.
Okay.
The number just wasn't caught in the project list.
Okay, okay.
That was the error.
So, as, as the council, we can approve that higher number, though, because I know the funding's there for that extra $4,000.
Yes.
Even more than that.
And we'll inform the committee when they get together again that we did this.
We added that...
We recommended this change for council and tell them why.
Okay, okay, that's right. Thanks. One, one more thing. So, I know Steve Adams, our engineer, was, who was the applicant for the lighting, and now he's leaving us, so do, I know it's...
Yeah, there's going to be a handoff of all of his projects.
All of his projects.
I'm not sure at this point who's going to be receiving that one, but it's on our list to track, and we'll work with Patty and her group to make sure that it doesn't fall through the cracks.
Somebody who used to work for ODOT, so they have an in, so he can get his time.
Is that what you want me to do?
No, I'm just kidding, I'm teasing you.
I know.
That's really hard to do, but it's just like, but that's, that's the challenge there, is, you know, trying to get, you know, they want, they want to see a plan and a design, and then they'll tell us if it's okay. I mean, it was, it's like backwards, you know, tell us what you need, and then we'll design it. But they want to, they don't want to do that work.
They won't commit.
They won't commit.
Right.
And so, you know, I know you're frustrated about this whole thing, and it's just taken a long time, but I guess we just have to go step by step.
$20,000 is for the preliminary assessment, engineering assessment.
Right.
And if they say yes to that, then we can move forward with...
With design.
Design and construction.
Yeah, it's perfect, yeah.
But it's not going to be 20 grand.
I know.
It's going to be a lot more than 20 grand.
Yeah, I know, but at least it's a step by step.
Yes.
We get there.
We're moving.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Just not to do with this exactly, but the, the Willamette Way pedestrian project, did that also, did we also do warning signs coming in from outside of town?
The speed is, your speed is...
Slowing down, coming into school zone, et cetera.
It actually turned out to be a really good project. Again, it took a little bit longer, but I'm glad that we took a pause and didn't just do it piecemeal.
Right.
Went on and really did a good job of...
So it's really done well.
Ground truthing things, and then joined up another project with this one, so it took a little bit longer, but I think it ended up the right way.
Yeah, yeah, it's great.
You'll be giving a much more brief presentation downstairs on this. Two slides, I believe.
Yes. That's the plan.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, I think that's it. I think so. So, I'll call us out a work session, and we'll meet, oh, look at that, we have over 30 minutes.
Vitamin D.
And there's a sun outside, so we'll be back downstairs at 7:00 PM. Okay, thank you.
If I go outside, I'm not coming back.